All right, Mayor, are you guys ready? Are you ready to roll?
Chaska City Council Meeting for Monday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Called a meeting to order at seven o'clock. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, good evening, welcome. At least we call roll, please.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Gra.
Here.
Mayor Winchell.
Here.
And tonight, Matt Poteraski is at the ICMA, right? So that's city manager's conference, basically. So he won't, will not be joining us tonight. So Elise, we're in good hands with Elise running the show, so. All right, with that, I, we're at item four, which is the adopting the agenda. Corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve agenda?
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard. Discussion. Hearing not all, favor sign five by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries, moves to five visitor presentation. Is there anyone here under visitor presentation? There's no one in the audience. Kevin, anybody online?
No.
Okay, so we'll move past that. Now we'll move to item six, approving a previous meeting minutes. And this is from the August twenty-ninth council meeting. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I would entertain a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes.
Motion approve previous.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Gra. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries, moves to item seven, consent items. These are all items that need our approval, but any and all could be pulled off for discussion if need be. Again, if no corrections or additions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moves.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield. Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries, moves to item eight, action items. First one I have on my list is Harvest West Neighborhood Park Plan Recommendation. I don't know who's taking this.
Mayor and councilmembers, Park and Rec Director Marshall Grange will be leading you through this one as well as the next one.
Okay. Take her away, Marshall.
All right, thank you, Elise. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here, and I'm actually joining you from Phoenix, Arizona. So this is the hotel in the background. AirLink, our Recreation Program Manager, myself are here for the National Park and Rec Conference that starts tomorrow. So with that, we'll talk about the Harvest West. I have a presentation, so I'm just gonna go ahead and share my screen, pull that up here.
Amazing technology.
I was thinking you got the better job between the two of us. Matt wasn't.
Is everybody able to see that?
Yep.
All right, great. Okay, so here's actually the image of the, of the actual park site showing some of the engagement we had with the neighbors. And so just set this up by saying this plan was developed by staff within our Public Works Department, our Parks and Recreation Department, along with input from the residents in the neighborhood. And we also worked with Hoytington Kegler Landscape Architectural Firm for some of the planning process as well. So tonight what I'll do is.
Marshall, can I interrupt a minute?
Yeah.
Are you gonna bring up a site with the actual location? I mean, I have a pretty good idea where this is.
I have, I have like about twelve slides I'm gonna be going through.
Okay.
So what I thought is I'll, I'll talk about the context of the park site. I'll talk through the neighborhood engagement and the planning process we used that ultimately led to our, our preferred concept plan. And I'll, I'll share with you details of that plan and then talk through how much it's gonna cost. And then in the very end, ask for your approval. So with that, a little bit about the park location. It's depicted there within that red circle. This park is a neighborhood park that lies within southwest Chaska. And it's just north of Big Woods Boulevard and to the east of Highway two-twelve there. And then would like to point out too, and I apologize, this graphic's kinda hard to read. But this neighborhood park, as you can see, next to this red arrow, was identified in the city's two thousand and forty comprehensive plan to be a future neighborhood park within this development. So this slide here, looking in the middle there, talks a little bit about the timeline that we use and shared with the, the residents in the neighborhood there. So back in May of this year, we sent a mailing out to the neighborhood. We actually sent that out to the residents that lived within a half a mile radius of the park, which you can see that dotted circle on the graphic to the left represents the, the half a mile radius around the park. So that mailing went to approximately four hundred and twenty-five households, inviting them to the first neighborhood park meeting that we planned on June fourteenth, which was to, you know, introduce the project and create a little bit of context for them and sort of set the stage for some of their input. Looking at that graphic on the left, one of the things we shared with the neighbors was just kinda some of the facts about the park and that it's a wallbaker site. The bottom kind of third of proportion is where more of the, the active components of the park will be. And then that upper two-thirds really contains a, a great natural resource, lots of trees. This whole area is actually a Savannah, Savannah oak. So there's some really impressive large oak trees that exist throughout that, that park site and was a great opportunity for the city to, to preserve those oaks in this natural resource here. The white lines kinda stemming from the park show some of the trail connectivity that come out of this neighborhood. So going to the north, residents will have the opportunity to connect up to the future regional, southwest regional trail, which is also a creek road there. And then stemming kinda southeast, they'll have a future opportunity. When Be, when Vista B Drive connects out to Creek Road, there'll be an opportunity there. They can also navigate south along Savannah Way and then take Big Woods Boulevard into downtown. And then they're also gonna have a great connection just further south on Savannah Way down to the future community park site that's planned for that area. On the evening of June fourteenth, we held the first neighborhood meeting. It was a ninety-five degree humid day, as I recall, and we still had about fifty to sixty people show up at that meeting, which was, was really good to see. And we shared with them some real basic concepts. And we developed the original concepts off of that image on the right, which was the developer's park exhibit that was part of their pre, pre-plat, um, planning. And so this was an image that residents in that area would have received when they moved into their homes. So that was really our starting point, our reference in, in terms of developing the concept plan. And the goal of that night was really to talk about the trail alignment generally, show them where we think the, the amenities within the park would lie. And then took them on a walking tour of the site, just so they could kind of visually and spatially see where those things would, would land. And then after that initial neighborhood park meeting, we then prepared and made available an online survey for the residents in that area that participated and then provided more feedback. So we were able to get that out through the, the residents that came that very first evening. We captured their, their emails, so we sent an email out. We also connected with one of the individuals who posted it on one of their neighborhood, neighborhood Facebook group pages. So I think it got out to residents that way. And then we also made the, the survey along with kind of information as we went throughout the planning process available on our city website. So we had a, a park development site that the residents were able to access. So this slide showing some of the results from that initials, from that online survey, in which we ended up getting a hundred and twelve survey responses back, so a hundred and twelve households approximately, which represented about three hundred and seventy-eight people. So I thought that was a good, a good return rate, you know, of the four hundred and twenty-five households. And that half a mile radius represented almost a twenty-five percent response. In terms of kind of some of the makeup of the respondents, we had good representation in terms of proximity. So above half of the respondents lived either adjacent to the park or within one block. And then the, the other half of the respondents lived a block or further away from the park. In terms of the, the mix of ages, there were about thirty-eight percent of the, of the representation were eighteen or, or younger. And then if you add up some of the others that represent the ages of eighteen to fifty-four, that came to forty-nine percent. And then ages fifty-five and plus had a fifteen percent representation. So it's kinda unique in that the, the homes adjacent to the park generally make up that fifteen percent of the fifty-five plus because they're, they're the retirement villas. But when you really look at the half a mile radius that this park is serving, it's definitely serving young families with children within that half a mile radius. And then that bottom pie chart just depicts kind of the pretty, pretty well even distribution of the different amenities that, of the residents selected to be incorporated into, into the park site. And that, that was kind of outside of the notion that we would, would be including for sure the, a playground feature within the, within the park. But probably the predominant thing there was park shelter along with picnic tables. And then off to the right are just some precedent images showing some of the other amenities that people favored. So they like the paved trails along with trails leading to overlooks. They like the incorporation of some signage in the park that could include some directional and pedestrian and bike signage. And then potentially even looking at signage that may depict the, the history of the, of the original farmstead there. They like the idea of additional shade trees and incorporating an open field play area. And then like I mentioned earlier, the incorporation of a shelter building along with picnic tables and benches throughout. And I think it's worth noting too that, you know, quite a few of the residents, many of them actually favored just keeping the, the park more completely nat, nature-based too. And so that was, you know, something for us to be mindful of as staff as we were, you know, wanting to carry out the vision and sort of the, the commonality of what we typically include with our neighborhood parks along with the fact that this is just such a great and a natural resource-based park. And people just want to enjoy the beauty of that as well.
So Marshall, I don't know, do you want us to ask questions as you go or at the end?
Yeah, you can ask questions as we go.
So why in a neighborhood park would we put a park shelter?
Because there was a, there's, I would say maybe the older adults within this residential neighborhood really liked the idea of having some sort of sense of a gathering area.
Are we gonna open something up that we maybe can't get away from? We start with, if this was called something different than a neighborhood park, I, I get it. But as a neighborhood park, I don't think we got a picnic shelter anywhere else, do we?
So I should probably, I should probably be a little bit more clear on what we're, what we're meaning by a picnic shelter. And I got an image of it coming up, but it would be a much smaller, just open air forested shelter.
I think it's shade.
This would, this would not be like a rentable shelter that we see typically in our other larger community parks.
So Marshall, just to be clear, so this one, you know, based on the illustration here, it's basically, it's just the roof for shade. There's no other services, no amenities, no bathrooms.
Correct.
That's, you know, effectively, it's a roof to provide some shade for a table or two.
Yeah, and let me go, I can skip forward. It would look like this on the left here. You know, maybe a little bit larger where we could get, get a couple of picnic tables. Provide some shade. And the thought was from a design element, if we could pull in some of the design from Harvest West Development, maybe pulling in a little bit of that cork, give it a steel roofing and whatnot to tie in sort of the design of the, of the development into the, the park if possible.
So kind of going to the mayor's question, this, so what if like when we start looking, because we have our, our reinvestment program or camp program where we, you know, go back and reinvest in our other community assets and our other parks and we do renovations and, you know, buy new equipment. What if some, as we go through that process, other neighborhoods say, hey, they got this really cool shelter, can we get one too? Right?
Mm-hmm.
And how much does that cost? Is that sort of, you know, increasing scope on what our future investments look like?
Yeah, I mean, I think we are, you know, potentially establishing, establishing a precedent that we would be open to incorporating a feature like this in a neighborhood park. You know, and if, if that's what comes about throughout that neighborhood engagement process. But there also is the balance of it, you know, in terms of the budget and, you know, what we can all incorporate into that, that park as well.
I was just maybe, because this is a rather large community park because of the, the oaks and all, and all the amenities that are already natural there. And, and you know, I, I, I get it, but I just, I just worry about, we start putting one, where, where does it then? And all of a sudden, we might get six parks that say we want it. How do, how do we do that? How do we determine who's first? And obviously, how do we pay for it? So those are just some things that just are, I mean, like I said, I, I get it, I understand it. It's not a bad thing. It's just looking forward, how do we, how would we look at the possibilities?
Yeah, I think messaging might be good around that too. Like if this is a direction, like a new, like direction, this park looks a little different than the neighborhood parks we've had, which makes sense to me, but maybe some like, I would hate for optically, the big expensive houses get the nice park.
Yes.
And I'll just be the one that says it, like optically, people could think that. That's not the case. I think that, like Marshall, I think this is the first neighborhood park we've built with, while you've been on board. Like I feel like our Parks and Rec Department looks different than it did before even. And that we have new ideas and fresh ideas. I think that's the story here is that with that, that's why we're, our neighborhood park's gonna look a little different. It's gonna serve a pretty big neighborhoods. But I think optically, we just have to be careful about that message. I think it's exciting, I love it, but.
I think there's a change in demographic of those too, because, I mean, I, as I, I mean, I'll sign myself as being guilty here as being not quite a helicopter parent, but when parks get built, like kids, you, my generation, like you just went to the park and played. But now it's like I wouldn't probably send my kid, like if I can't see my kid, I'm there. So like having that shade structure is a little bit of that nod because like, nothing is worse than watching your kid on a park and you're beating out in the sun just hot. So I think there's some of that too, where parents and how they interact with parks has changed over time. To your point, like.
Yeah, I think that's an important message.
As well, right? I think it is that messaging, right?
I agree with Councilmember Hatfield that it's, it's a messaging and I think that there are, I hadn't thought about the image part of it, but that clearly could be.
Yeah.
Without, without the proper messaging.
Yep.
I, I think that that's a possibility. So we'd have to be very, very clear how we message and move forward with this process.
Well, and, you know, and that said, you know, that also means that if we, let's see, if we did do it in this park and then let's say the next time we did a community park was in a neighborhood, is also a really nice, large neighborhood with upscale homes, it just reinforces that. So we need to be really careful about what our actions are because they often speak louder than what our messaging is sometimes, right? So that said, just to kind of in perspective, what's the cost of, you know, that element? I mean, not because we're talking about it, just to kind of understand like what that means. Because the reason why I asked is because if we said, okay, maybe we did do it and maybe if we're going to start introducing shelters, is that something that we wanna, maybe if it's cost-effective, does it mean that maybe we pick some different parks that we start targeting for those shelters in the future? And then we're deliberate about spreading that around different types of, you know, different, uh, different neighborhoods around the community? How much does one of these shelters go for or a ballpark?
I think we're estimating right around forty thousand.
Okay.
For, for that, that amenity of the park.
That particular amenity, right?
Yep, yep. You know, I think it's important too to this, I mean, I think there is probably like a, a package of amenities that, you know, I think we could support in a neighborhood park. So for instance, with it, with this park, you're gonna see it doesn't include a basketball court. You know, whereas some of our other neighborhood parks have, have that feature with them. So I think some, there's a little bit of, you know, a mix, I think, of elements that we factor in. To Michaela's point, I think, you know, while maintaining that equity as we think about our entire system. But it just felt like this was a, a neat, a new feature that, you know, Brian Jung and our Public Works Department supported as well and it just kind of fit, fit with the, sort of the nature of this particular park.
I guess if I, if I can just speak on it for just a second. So my park in my neighborhood was supposed to have a memorial. And now it's a big open field of duffing. And I would long to see a simple shelter to, 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 to Councilmember Gra's point of when your kids are playing on the playground, it's, there's no, there, there's zero shade trees at my park, barely, barely, right? So by, by virtue of what I see in my neighborhood park, that doesn't mean that I would look at this neighborhood park and say, well, because mine doesn't have, this one shouldn't have it either. I would actually advocate for a shelter. But I would also advocate for the position of equity to say that we do need to talk about maybe rounding back to when we do reinvest in parks and when they're up for schedule, that maybe that is something that we should look at in the purview of having them. And you're right, Mayor, what precedent does that set? You know, how far down the line do you wanna go? But I would say, I would, like I said, I would long to have one. And, and to me, that just makes the point of maybe it should be there, so.
You know, one thing, I don't know how aware you all may be, a change that Marshall has been implementing along with Brian Jung as we go around year to year and implement the CIP program or the camp program, right? For improvements on each of the neighborhood parks as we're cycling through them year by year, is a heightened engagement process, very similar to what Marshall is talking about for this process. And that has opened up the opportunity to have those conversations about what is possible, you know, through that camp investment. We've got a pot of money here dedicated to making an investment and upgrade to the, or not necessarily upgrade, but improvement to the park, maintenance improvement. And here's a slate of opportunities. Let's talk about what makes sense for the residents that's around that neighborhood park and how, how they're using or want to use that park. And so I think through that conversation presents a really valuable opportunity for things like this to happen and newer things to happen. For example, is it Cortina Woods Park? Just happened last year. And out of that conversation, there was identified a desire for bags and boards, right? So those were installed in that park where there hadn't been any of that in the community before, so.
So there's beanbag boards in there, is that what you're saying?
Yep, there's permanent beanbag boards in that park now. And that came out of that dialogue with the neighborhood. So I think that's one example of one that's already occurred. And here's a, you know, here's a situation where we got a blank slate, which is unique. But that dialogue is going on along with those reinvestments. So I think that gives an opportunity to say, hey, you know, there's an opportunity maybe to do a shelter, but there's a give and take, right? So the neighborhood gets to kind of wrestle around with that a little bit.
Like I said, I, I'm not against it. We just need to make sure that we have a plan moving forward, how we're gonna go about doing it. And, and clearly, the first time around, it's about messaging. And I, I totally understand that we have more opportunities now and, and better ability to do things than we did in the past. I just want us to be clear about how, how we, how we're looking at and how we move forward. I just don't want us to think we'll put it in there and nothing will be said because I think at some point, somebody's gonna say so. And maybe, maybe there's a different system we can look at that maybe is more cost-effective where they will use netting or something, I don't know. But it, it's just, you know, you want, you want a conversation or giving it to you.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it. It's good feedback.
I, I think wholeheartedly agree with the mayor and other council members here. I, I think the key thing here is that when coming up with that messaging, the expectation is that, well, when am I gonna, when is my neighborhood gonna get one? Or will my neighborhood get one? That's gonna be the common question if people really like it, right? So I think that we need to be ready before they ask the question over, because if we're ready before they ask the question of, here's general plan, here's what our thoughts are and which parks could be candidates for that, and here's when they might be rolled out, that I think helps people understand that it's, there's a long-term vision and a long-term plan and a strategy around it, rather than, oh, we had this great idea to do it, well, what about me? Right? You know, and I think that's the, that's where people feel like they're burned or they feel they're discontent, right? But they feel like, oh, okay, then mine's coming up and here's like the ones ahead of it. And they know that those parks are, you know, in sort of shape of a need of repair or whatever. It's like, okay, I get it, you know, it's like there's an order to it. People understand that. So I think that helps them frame that, it helps us frame the message for them in terms of what to expect.
Great. Okay, move on.
Sure.
All right.
Kinda took you off your course a little bit, I'm sure.
Unless we're gonna talk about beanbag things for a while, we can chew up another ten more minutes on that.
I do have a wait, quick question on the beanbag things. Are they BYOB, Bring Your Own Bags?
Yes.
Okay.
BYOB.
I was gonna say that.
Whatever Bs you need.
So they're, they're, they're set up and they're just a concrete? So they're, they're, they're set up, and they're just a concrete?
There's pictures in here somewhere.
Well, I,
Yeah.
I looked for them, but I didn't really see a good picture of them.
So, head in the next coming slide, so we are incorporating them into this park.
Oh, we are, oh, that's cool.
Um, so yeah, so I, I guess kind of the culmination of all the, the feedback we got ultimately led to this, um, preferred plan, um, in front of you here, so, I can kind of go through and just talk about the variety of elements, um, throughout this plan, and, um, so off on your right-hand side would be probably the primary entrance into the park off of Vistabue Drive. Uh, so the plan there would be to have a, a park sign coming into the entrance, uh, and then some trees lining the trail as you come in. Um, you'll see on this plan, it does show for ornamental trees. This was an item that didn't get discussed at our, um, Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, um, they had provided the feedback that, you know, might be more preferable to plant more native trees that kind of fits in with this, um, this area, rather than going with the, uh, ornamental trees, and so, I did talk that over further with Brian, um, and he, uh, he agreed with that notion, and has a plan to plant some more native trees, that could include maybe some sugar beetles and, and, uh, some red and white oats coming into the entrances, um, so given a little bit more of that native planting, more natural look, um, maybe, maybe more so than kind of this, this urban entry coming into the park. Uh, but then as you come in, you can see, um, in, on the black line there, that is depicting the, the trail, um, throughout the park. Some nice loop trail system, um, that's occurring in the park, um, and where we can, between the trail and the backyards of the homes, uh, we are intending to create a, a, a little bit of a buffer with, um, sort of some prairie plantings, um, that, that again, provides that little bit of buffer between the backyards of the resident's homes, um, and the trail. Um, coming in a little bit further, um, on the top side of this trail, um, you can see that there's gonna be two playground containers. So the one on the left, a smaller one, will be geared for children the ages of two to five, and then the larger container on the right will be for children's, uh, ages five to twelve. And then we plan to have a couple of paths that lead to some overlook sites, um, underneath the impressive oaks that look out over into the, um, the wetland area here. So that could either, um, probably more than likely be benches, or maybe a suspended swing. Um, and then along the trail here, we're looking at, uh, incorporating a bike rack to encourage, uh, families and children, um, throughout the area, to be able to bike to the park, and have a place to park their bike when they get there, um, and then look at the possibility of some, some history and nature interpretive signage. Uh, there already is some signage out there, um, that exists, just, um, mentioning the, uh, the wetland area. Um, and then coming down the trail, off to the left here is where that small shelter building would be located. And then across the trail from there, um, is where we would locate, uh, the concrete back toss area. So the idea there is that sh- that, that, um, shelter area is close enough where parents could sit down and relax, and still have a visual of their children, um, playing in the playground, you know, or if there's some older adults there that, that aren't in the park with their children, there is a little bit of a degree of separation, um, from the playground. And then, kind of, off to the right in the middle here is where we'll capture some open, um, green space, some open field play area. These two red circles are, um, showing, there are a couple of existing oak trees that do need to come down. Uh, one of them, um, one of them is diseased, and another one was damaged by lightning. And then you'll see, um, there are a few clusters of ash trees that currently exist, um, you know, those ash trees don't really provide a lot of value, um, and, and from my understanding, um, you know, you, you really don't even necessarily want them as part of a, an oak savanna. And as we all know, eventually, they're probably gonna be hit by Emerald Ash Ford. However, currently, they do provide a, a level of screening for the, the residents that live along this, um, this eastern edge. Given that they currently do not have the Emerald Ash Ford, um, the plan is, is to plant some trees in front of those ash trees, so between the existing trees and the existing, uh, residence homes, um, that allows a little bit of time for those trees to establish some growth, and then likely and probably about three years is what Brian Jung estimates is when we would need to take those ash trees down. Uh, but then there would be a level of, um, some other trees, um, established, um, help, help with a little bit of screening for them. Um, and then, off to the lower left here will be another park entrance coming in, um, that'll serve the western edge here. And then you'll see some little white dashes throughout, which are showing where some park benches would get placed along the trails and near the playground structures. I'd like to point out too, that prior to this entire process, um, Brian Jung and staff and his department were able to secure a grant and restore the wetland that exists on this site, um, so they were able to restore it back to the, I think, the original nineteen forties wetland depth, um, which was really, really cool, and then they did a lot of, uh, pollinator plantings around, uh, around the, um, wetland area. And then, on the north, they're part of this park site, um, they, they've, uh, begun a lot of work removing the buckthorn throughout that, throughout the, uh, wood area. Any questions on this site plan?
How far roughly is, like, those playground structures on the stormwater pond you had to?
Um, well, it looks like a half inch is about a hundred feet.
Yeah, I was trying to do the math.
Or an inch, I don't know what that is.
I mean, only that, just, you know, right, with kids and stormwater ponds, and, you know, it, I, I, I think it's a good distance, I do think also, in this neighborhood, if, um, I don't know what the official stance, the city believes in this, but I can tell you what happens, is that thing will freeze over, and there'll be a lot of hockey players on that stormwater pond, uh, I think they get used quite a bit already in the area, from I see, so, um, I do think that'll actually be a nice winter add to the park, officially or unofficially.
Yeah, unofficially.
Unofficially, yep.
Yeah.
So, Marshall, is there, is there gonna be any entrance points from, from the north, now I see houses, kind of all the way up there, but is there any entrance points, like, on mine it's K, but on yours it's, uh, uh, that middle, if you go through that, that middle area, going out to the, to our left side, is there any openings over there at all? Uh, I just worry, are, are people gonna cut through yards to get there, and stuff like that, uh, versus going all the way down to, to that bottom trail entrance? Cause there's,
Good, good question, yeah, there, there are gonna be, um, entrances, entrance and entrances, sorry, um, to the north of, of the ones that are showing here, on both sides.
All right.
And then, and then there's the plan, um, basically on either side, it culminates on the northern end, ends, and there's some, um, some cut-throughs on those culminates for those people to access, they know where they're part of the park as well.
Yeah, cause we, I, and the only reason I say that is, we all, we all know the shortest path anywhere is a direct connection, and if it's cut through yards, you know, people will, and, and kids, and, kids are kids, I mean, that's just what they do. And that's why I say, it kind of looks like, I mean, the entrances there are great, but there's big areas that there aren't any entrances, and that's, and, or maybe past that, that we can't do anything about that.
So I was looking at skipping ahead, because you have the other diagram, I assume you're gonna show it later, that shows the future design nature trails in the Phase Two, or future phase. I see that there's like a, you know, there's a city-owned, you know, future park connection to the east, but I don't see where there's one to the west that's on the more northerly section, and, or maybe it's planned, but it's just not on the diagram.
Yeah, I don't think it's just showing on the diagram, but there is another entrance, um, I believe it's coming in just north of the, the wetland area. What's the plan?
Okay, so, but, so effectively, this whole park is a hundred percent surrounded by the back of homes that are in this neighborhood, with, you know, selected spots where entrances will be kind of drawn out to the street, and was it at least one, two, three, four, four, five places?
Correct.
Okay.
And then to the north, there is a kind of a nature corridor that extends up to Creek Road. Coming out of the northern, northern end of the park.
Yep.
Yep. One last thing I forgot to mention too, is there is kind of a dark green dotted line around the perimeter, so, so the plan will be for that to be seeded grass, and for the park maintenance staff to mow, mow the, the park, um, within there. All right, so the next slide is, is kind of showing what we already talked about, this idea of a, a small picnic shelter, a permanent concrete bag toss, and then incorporation of some, some bike racks. This is the showing, a zoomed-in version of those, uh, playground containers. Here's a visual of what the, uh, two-to-five-year-old playground container will look like. Um, so when we looked at the playgrounds, we worked with Voysington to conduct an RFP, um, we got three proposals back, and ended up going with, um, Minnesota-Wisconsin Playground. Uh, and they represent Game Time, which is a well-known commercial uh, playground equipment manufacturer. And the desire of the neighborhood was to go with more of a, uh, nature-based theme playground, rather than maybe modern, bright colors, so that was what we went, went with up here. So here's another visual of the two-to-five-year-old playground. And then moving on to the five-to-twelve, you can see a nice, nice play structure there, lots of opportunities for climbing, and sliding, and exploration. This is a really neat, uh, spider climber. Kids can climb up and hang out on the top, or do a little bit of monkey bar action on the bottom. Um, there's a couple of seat spinners, um, within, in the site, and then you can see sort of how this lays out, um, across the trail from, uh, the two-to-five-year-old playground area.
And just a quick question, so where the playgrounds, we're using, was it mulch, not the recycled rubber, right, or?
Correct, so we use what's called a, um, an engineered wood fiber.
Yep.
So, so it goes through a process where it rounds off the edges and eliminates, um, splinting.
Okay. And, and because I remember like, the, either the engineered rubber mats, or the engineered rubber that was kind of like, like a rubber version of Mulch, were like, really popular for a while, and I, refresh my memory, why we're not using those again?
Um, well, one would be cost, it's good, those are very expensive.
Right.
Um, and so I'm not, I'm not actually even aware of us having that type of surfacing in any of our parks in Chaska.
Yeah, I don't know.
What you're seeing, what you're seeing in some cities go to now is more that smooth.
Yep.
Um, that's smooth kind of rubber surfacing.
Yeah.
Um, but that, that really comes down to, uh, cost.
Mm-hmm.
You pro- probably would not, you know, typically see those incorporated into a, a, a neighborhood park.
Sure.
You know, but I think it is something we are looking at a little bit more, um, as we think about our larger community destination parks.
Yeah. Okay.
Because those, those, those do definitely, um, enhance some of the, uh, accessibility for kids to be able to play, for sure.
Yep.
Um, so yeah, so everything we talked about, and kind of what we're looking at getting approved tonight is really the, the Phase One component of this park. So everything underneath that white dotted line, and then, um, you know, Phase Two would be to the north, where we would extend that outer paved trail to create an entire, uh, kind of loop of the park. And then I think our thought would be to, um, incorporate some nature-based trails, um, within that, just for residents to be able to, to do some nature hikes, um, throughout that northern section. Uh, but we would look at, um, you know, getting, getting Phase One completed, and then start to discuss what those future opportunities will look like to the north. Uh, but overall, I would say, you know, kind of the highlights of this neighborhood park really is the, the nature of it, uh, the beautiful savanna oaks that exist within it. Uh, along with the wetland feature, I think the incorporation of the, uh, the nature, nature playground, uh, is really neat, along with the, uh, really the trails. You know, I think the trails are something that are a little more unique compared to some of our other neighborhood parks, um, you know, and that really lends itself just based on the, the size of this park.
Marshall, I have a qu- quick question about that, so as far as like, timeline, Phase One, Phase Two, um, what do you approximate as far as the second part of it with the trails, like, how long, how much longer?
I think we would, you know, start to take a look at that next summer.
Okay.
Um, and then start, you know, factoring that in with, you know, other projects that, you know, Brian had slated for next year, and what the cost would be.
Okay, yeah, I just don't want to see that go off the radar, because I think, I think that, that is a nice amenity, especially if we're talking about demographically, that some of the homes that buffer this park, um, some of the older folks that live there, I think they would really appreciate the, the trailing, um.
Yeah, I agree, and then, that whole area is really starting to fill in quick, so.
Quick question, so the area to the north of the future design nature trails, that's the, you know, city-owned land that would connect up to, um, the old Creek Road, which will become a, a path, a trail itself. So is it something where someone who wasn't in the neighborhood could potentially just park there, and then just, you know, get out their bike and just ride around this area?
Yeah.
From there, okay. So that would be the entry point, if somebody wanted to, and just like, to enjoy that same, you know, nature area or something like that, maybe go someplace else?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so in theory, they could, you know, either continue on Creek Road, or they could come down into this park area, um, you know, come out of the neighborhood, and then extend down to the future, um, community park as well.
Okay.
So, a lot of great trail connectivity out of this area.
Yep. Part of the Southwest Chaska region, or it's not Southwest Chaska, Southwest Regional Trail Plan, um, that you all approved. with the consent agenda. Um, we do identify a couple of locations on the Creek Road Trail for future opportunities. Um, and this is, you know, on term and timeline, but there are future opportunities there to create some park and ride opportunities to serve that regional trail network. And so that would then be a really close link to this neighborhood trail. Um, so there's, there's a lot of kind of interaction that can go on in this area.
All right, um, so as far as costs go, this is the breakdown. Um, so you can see on the top there were the the fees to work with Hoyzington and getting their professional services. Um, the playground equipment and the labor to install. Then we've got the sort of the surfacing, the wood fiber, um, and the concrete curbing that uh, factors into the uh, playground uh, container. The site amenities, furniture and signage, so that there, that fig dollar amount would incorporate or include the that small park shelter, picnic tables, benches, uh, that concrete bag toss. Um, any sign, uh, the park sign and things like that. And then uh, the tree seeding stabilization and erosion control factored into it. And then sort of the phase one um, trail elements for the uh, the base and the blacktopping of it. Uh, so a total amount of right around four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. And this is within, within the budget that administration has prepared as part of the whole Southwest Chaska um, development, you know, to account for the neighborhood park and the future community park through the uh, development fees collected throughout uh, the Southwest Chaska area. Uh, so this is within that um, that budget and does still give us um, some remaining funding for that that phase two portion to the north of this park. So with that, uh, see what other questions you may have and then ultimately entertain a motion.
Thoughts?
I don't have any questions, I just really like the vibe of it. I think it's like, very much fits Chaska and really thoughtful, the things that are going into it. I think that fits kind of our uh, best small town in Minnesota feel and just the intentionality behind each of the pieces, I think is really nice. So I'm excited for this park and I'll probably wander up there myself sometime.
Yeah, I'm also really excited about this park. I mean, it's one of those things, kind of going through this, I feel like, gosh, when can you finish? I can't get my bike down there and start riding those trails.
Wonder.
Um, it's, I mean, I love the kind of the the duality of the personalities of the park. We have like a nature area and then there's still areas that, you know, for kids and families that can gather and gathering spaces. Um, you know, it's, you know, and it's kind of, you know, I can think of kind of like in the, you know, like you look at like the town course too, has like the sort of like the duality too of the course itself, right? There's like the woods area and there's the open, you know, kind of like the open course area. And this kind of exemplifies kind of like the the different personalities too within a relatively small space. I mean, it's a pretty good sized park, but it has very different personalities and offers different amenities for residents, uh, which is fantastic. So, you know, love that and love that we're, you know, honoring, you know, different perspectives from within the community. So I think it'll be a great amenity for like all the residents there.
Yeah, I appreciate that feedback and that was sort of shared by one of our park and rent commissioners who happens to be one of the residents that that lives right up against the park. And, you know, I, I think we as staff were pretty mindful of this, trying to strike a a nice balance with, you know, preserving the nature while also providing some amenities for those uh, families with with children to be able to come over and play too.
I was gonna say, I think one opportunity too with that future design trails, I mean, we've talked about this before on bike trails. I think there's some desire to not pave every bike trail either. And and maybe in in that nature trail area, you look for more of a non-paved, natural surface as an opportunity. It'd kind of be a blend. I know that's not in scope of this phase one piece, I get that. But I think fitting with that nature theme, that would be an opportunity, I think. We are really good at blacktopping trails and a lot of people, especially like park stuff, right? You gotta, it's not just bikers, it's walkers, it's strollers, it's wagons, it's stuff like that. But I think in that nature trail up there, that'd be an interesting idea. Again, now, you know, who uses and what what's they, what they want type of thing too. But just a a thought that incorporates some feedback that we've received at times about you don't need to blacktop every trail, we could, you know, have crushed crushed rock or a harder rock service.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I really think that the, I mean, the playground uh, amenities, the park amenities for the um, you know, adults and um, I think those are all really great, well thought out. The playground was a little reminiscent of a childhood playground of mine. The only thing missing is a a hot metal slide. Um, but you know, those days are long gone. Um, but no, I think the trail system, I think, is really great. Because I think this area of Chaska being newly developed, um, I think that's the one thing that, you know, just hasn't quite come to fruition yet up there as far as the interconnectivity to the trail system. Just, you know, we all know that that's, you know, one of the largest amenities, the most popular amenities and throughout the whole city. So I I'm excited to see that come in, so um, I think it's great.
Is there some like intentionality behind like having kind of a special feature about the parks we do? Like the spider thing that is in there, like that's not something I've seen at other parks necessarily in Chaska or anywhere, I don't know. But lots of, I mean, it's good for climbing, but I kind of like that. I think of, this is a touchy subject, but Fireman's Park too. And I realize that that was funded differently and a long time ago, but there was a fire truck there to play on and it was awesome. And I just think having like a little feature that just makes that park special is so nice. And I think like, well, the outdoorsiness of it, which was definitely a vibe, certainly relevant. And like the spider thing to climb in was really awesome. So I don't know if that's intentional or not, but I like that it has something that makes that park unique. So I don't know if there's, if it was just something we liked and put it there.
Yeah, well, I mean, obviously it kind of plays out the nature thing, but you're right. It it uh, it's a unique enough element that I think kids will refer to it.
Yeah.
You know, as such, and I think where we can incorporate those things into our neighborhood parks um, all the better, you know, this for kids' imaginations and, you know, maybe just differentiating, differentiating a little bit between our our parks throughout the entire system.
Yeah.
Which is the next agenda topic, if we left it up to kids to name, the recommend name might have been Spider Park, probably.
Ooh.
I want to go to that spider, I want to go to that spider park.
Yeah.
I I I think it's a a great use of the of the acreage and the land that's available there. My only concern is it's seems more than a neighborhood park and that people will drive to it. And then where are they going to park that? This just seems so nice that it's going to draw more than neighborhood. And that's where I have a little, little bit of a concern about, there is nowhere to park. I don't think, is there anywhere that could be that if someone did decide to drive there? Versus just parking on the street, which is.
There, there's not a parking lot, no.
No, I'm bad at visioning growth and time, but if I'm heading west on two twelve there, do I have some visibility into that park?
No.
I don't think so.
Okay, I mean, I can see, like, I see the, like, cul-de-sac, you can see that.
See the trees.
You see the houses.
Yeah, you see mainly houses, I feel like, right?
Even now, you look at it, you just see. So I think, Marshall, if if I'm not mistaken, like we were talking about that northern axis. So if the up by the trailhead for where um, Creek Road would end, there was a plan to put like a, to put a bulb there and then to put potentially parking there to access that connector down to the other end of Creek Road, right? And so that would probably be the closest you'd have to any public parking where you could probably access it from eventually, but not in the near immediate future, right?
Yeah, like some sort of a trailhead.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I think that would probably be the, that'd probably be the, maybe the the closest type of parking to access this park. You're right though, I mean, I I do think because of the size of this and the uniqueness of it, it does feel a little bit more than than a neighborhood park, um.
Just feels like it's an in-between and I don't know what you call it.
An in-between, yeah, but.
And and.
I think when that, I think when that future community park gets developed though, that's probably, you know, where more, more people will gravitate to.
Mm-hmm.
And but this has got its own unique qualities and amenities that still, you know. And I envision the other park of more open space, you know, with some small other amenities. But I, uh, this one has just got a lot of uniqueness to it. And and I know that we don't build parking lots for neighborhood parking lots, but I I uh, I just worry about people, they see it and start parking in places. And again, they see that there's an opening and they start, hate to see them cutting through people's yards and things like that. But um, I don't know, I guess that's a bridge we cross as the, as we get there. But I, there's definitely some uniqueness that could draw additional people. I mean, look at, look at what the Fireman's Park draws. And this has got, to me, minus the water amenity, it's got a lot of pretty unique things. And a big playground structure and so, just, just a concern I have with it. When you build something too nice, that's what happens.
Yeah, stop doing such a good job.
Yeah.
I'd also be remiss, everyone's gonna hate me in one second, for not mentioning, if I don't mention, that I would love to eventually see what we're doing with the park in downtown Chaska East. Just saying, but that's not really related to this. I know you guys are working on it, I just don't want to get set on fire by my constituents.
All right, uh, any other questions for Marshall? I think we drove them pretty good. But any additional? Now we're out of time and we need to make a decision.
I'll make a motion to recommend the Chaska City Council recommend or recommend approval of Harvest West Neighborhood Park Plan.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember one.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Gra. Uh, again, this is uh, approval of a uh, plan recommendation for Harvest West Neighborhood Park. Any further discussion?
Just a comment that, you know, our earlier discussion about being intentional about the plan for the shelters is probably, I think, still relevant. Um, because I think we want to make sure we manage the, you know, or give people that understanding of what our vision is. If it's something, especially if it's something that, you know, proves really popular. Um, that we have some, you know, some vision to share around that. Because that's something we, I definitely don't want to feel like it's gets away from us.
Yep, I got that noted, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else? We got a motion, a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Now, on that same park, we go into a name recommendation. I assume that's you still, Mr. Marshall.
Yes, I get to go again, so I got a name for this park now.
Spider Park.
So, give you a little context on this. Um, so at the very first neighborhood park meeting, we did make the residents aware that we do have a park naming policy and that there would be an opportunity for um, them as residents in that area to propose um, some park names for for the Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation to City Council. So we made that opportunity available after the second neighborhood park meeting and referred individuals to our website where we had um, a copy of park naming policies along with a proposal form for them to fill out and submit to us. We did um, hint to the residents that as staff throughout our planning process, you know, we gotta kind of give it a name and we've, we've been referring to it as Savannah Park um, along the way. So kind of gave them that, that hint. Um, however, uh, we ended up receiving two proposals from residents in the area. Um, one individual proposed uh, Majestic Oaks Park. And then another individual proposed um, like four or five different names. Um, and then we as staff did uh, provide our our own recommendation to the Parks and Recreation Commission for consideration as well. Um, the Parks and Rec Commission, um, they did like Majestic Oaks Park as a name. They they thought it was a really good descriptor of that area. However, um, one individual did point out that there is a golf course by that exact same name in the north metro.
Yes, yeah.
So so they thought that there there could be some confusion there. Um, so they really liked the the notion of Savannah, um, just because that is really uh, and then defining what the actual natural resource is there. However, the Parks and Rec Commission liked adding oaks onto that. So their, their recommendation is Savannah Oaks Park, um, which I think is a great name. Um, it's describing the the predominant geographical feature within the park. And I think it also provides us a good reference point, knowing that um, the primary road um, coming through that development is Savannah Way. So I think there's a good reference between the primary road going to the development along with uh, the naming of the park.
So there is a Savannah Oaks Park in Shakopee too.
I just saw that too.
Yeah.
I think it's a neighborhood park too, so.
Yeah.
I I was wondering that, like, do we consider that? Like, some majestic oaks was mentioned. Normally, it probably wouldn't be that big of a deal except for Shakopee's right next to us. But there, it's a small neighborhood mark, park too. I don't know about small, but it's a neighborhood park as well. So I don't know if we consider that at all.
You know, I'll just throw this out, I, we've got street names that are in other cities and we have all of that stuff. And like I said, if this was a park.
A bigger.
That we were, that was gonna be athletic fields and all that, that people are looking and have to go to. I'd be a little more concerned, but a neighborhood park?
Wayfinding is a.
I I'm not overly concerned about that, that's just me.
That was my thought too, since it's a smaller neighborhood park. If it, I mean, even our bigger parks, when we have like Community Park, Veterans, I mean, there's a Veterans Park in every single city.
Right.
So you're gonna put the city you're going into when you go to, but I don't know if we like considered. And like I said, I think for neighborhood parks, it's not as significant. Because yeah, if I'm in a parking lot, you're walking to people, the destination of people that live right there.
Well, even there's Fireman's Parks in other cities. And no one gets confused. So I went to Shakopee's Fireman Park in San of Chascas for like a vaudeville or something. I mean, you know, it's kind of unusual, it'd be odd for that to happen, right? So, yeah, I, it's should have, it's not the biggest issue, right?
I like it.
Yeah, yeah, I think it fits there well. And it, I always do so appreciate when the name kind of has something to do with the area. And I'm sure you do too, because there's so many parks everywhere that it's like, okay, where is that park? And when there's like a ref, point of reference, that helps so much. So I do appreciate that about the name too.
But that's part of our naming process.
Well, yeah, but.
Is that we.
I don't know, because sometimes they still confuse me, which one confuses me the most? I'll think of it. But there's one where it's like, the park is named something, but there's another area of the city that's named that. I'm gonna look it up, but.
I mean, and and that may have happened as.
Well, yeah.
We built more.
Yeah, no, I'm sure it has.
We used to name them after people, we don't do that anymore, you know? Um, I have a, I have a named park by me, so, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, Marshall, what's the name of the park on the other side of Savannah Way? The east side of Savannah Way? Because there's like that similarly enclosed park, what's the name of that one?
I believe that's Highland.
That's the one, the other.
That's a neighborhood association owned and run.
Okay.
Silly, I don't know that it necessarily.
Because I remember that it was something a little different, yeah, so that was someone.
A tracker.
It just mirrors it on the other side of Savannah Way in the Harvest.
Yeah.
Oh, I was thinking of the city park even further east.
Oh, no, sorry. Oh, no, sorry. I was thinking, so, you know, so if you go into just the other side of Savannah Way and the other Harvest that's, you know, more built out, there's a, a neighborhood park there, too, that's kind of the mirror image, so to speak. I was just curious what the name of that park was in relationship to it.
Yeah, like me, that one's an association owned or.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Even though I think that from, uh, the Carver GIS that shows that the city of Chaska owns the land, right? I don't know, just curious. I mean, it's not really material to what we're talking about, but.
Yeah, I'll have to look at that further.
So, okay, I was, there's one to the south of there, um, which is a tot lot. I thought you were talking about that one.
No.
Um, the property that you're talking about that's owned by the city of Chaska, that is all, um, stormwater piling area. So there's no actual.
It's not actually a place structure on there, per se.
Yep.
So it's, so really it's not an official park. It's more just than, it's basically it's a, a really a nice outlot for the residents who back up to it. And some people might choose to.
It's really not usable for recreation. It's, so that's the stormwater pounding, yeah.
That's where I was pointing to, but it's just.
So this is where the park was that we're building, right? And then this is on the other side of Savannah Way here. This is the other lot.
Oh, yeah, that's right in, I know where that is. Go in the main entrance and, yeah, it's right in, it's down in there. Yep, gotcha.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
I know.
So that's not really a, it's not really a park. It's just a, it's effectively just a glorified outlaw.
I was thinking of this.
No, there's, there is a, I think there's playground structure in there.
Well, no, I think this is where it's at. I think it's farther down.
Down here. Yeah, and I know which one you're talking about. That's the Association Park, yeah.
Savannah Way is right here.
The tot lot's up Painted Sky Trail.
Yeah, cause we were talking about.
I'm coming in the first one.
We were talking about one up here, you know, this right here.
Is it up there?
No, that's that stormwater ponding.
Looks like an amoeba.
But the park, the slated park's over here.
Okay, yeah, good.
All right.
Yep.
Anything else related to the naming of the park? We're kinda wandering.
Yep.
No.
All right, uh, I need a motion, one more or another.
Motion to name the park Savannah Oaks Park.
Yeah, a motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong, uh, in naming the park recommendation of Savannah Oaks Park. Uh, discussion. Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, you are done, Mr. Grange. Thank you for zooming in. Learned something down there now.
All right, thank you all. Have a great night.
Night.
We moved eight C zoning ordinance amendment, uh, to chapter fifteen point oh eight to include language that were required of all parts of whole neighborhood meeting. You require posting a notice on properties subject to planning applications.
The mayor and councilmember, I'll turn the sword and eat.
Well, you got off easy tonight. You don't have to do any presentation.
Well planned.
Uh, you're not done yet.
Yeah, we're not through bills yet. So. Um, so tonight, uh, mayor and councilmembers, the item in front of you is an ordinance amendment. Um, and really what it's related to is, uh, changing or I guess bolstering the public engagement, um, that wraps around development proposals. Just a little bit of background here. On July eighteenth, um, you probably all recall, there was a joint work session between the City Council and Planning Commission. Uh, in that meeting, uh, we reviewed current requirements and practices. We discussed challenges with the current framework, presented findings of peer communities, and discussed and developed consensus on recommendations for implementation. Uh, out of that meeting, at that time, staff presented, uh, recommended phase one, recommended phase two. I'll remind you of both of those in a minute here. Tonight's items, or tonight's ordinance change really addressed those phase one recommendations, and I'll get, I'll get to that. Uh, September thirteenth, so last Wednesday, uh, there was a planning commission meeting held. Staff did present this to the planning commission. And, uh, so we reviewed that proposed ordinance amendment to chapter fifteen point oh eight. A public hearing was held. Um, and planning commission did make a motion and, and voted to recommend council adopt, uh, the ordinance being presented to you tonight to amend chapter fifteen point zero eight. So the recommendations that were presented at that work session and that council and planning commission, uh, felt comfortable moving forward with, uh, were to require developers to place signs on sites of development proposals. Um, and so here are examples of signs that were presented at that meeting. Also to require developer neighborhood meetings before concept submission, um, with some minimum expectations for notification method, topics to cover, the format of minutes, um, and reporting in the project narrative. Also to increase mail notification boundary to five hundred feet for public hearings and this all steps of approval. And then also, um, at that time, it was noted that these requirements would require an ordinance amendment for the requirements that developers would have. So the proposed change in front of you tonight, I'll walk through those items, um, for that, for the ordinance change in chapter fifteen point oh eight. The public notice portion, the changes would require public hearings for zoning ordinances amendments, uh, conditional use permits and variances. And public hearing notice would be sent to all properties within five hundred feet of the proposed project site via mail. Today, we do three hundred and fifty feet as a practice. That meets ordinance in some cases. In other cases, it exceeds ordinance. Um, so we've been consistent with that three hundred and fifty feet. This will move it to five hundred feet, um, in all cases. One of the things I wanna note is we have done some work to change our courtesy notice and the format of that. Presently today, it's a letter that comes addressed in an envelope, um, to residents. We're moving that to a, uh, postcard format. Um, so as Kevin Wright has, uh, informed us on various occasions, in order to throw out a postcard, you at least have to look at it.
You have to what?
You have to at least look at it. So this is a way to, to get information more directly in front of people and hopefully catch their eye. Um, whereas a enclosed letter, um, often, uh, people might find that to just be junk mail. They may not even open it and toss it. Couple of things here to note. We would, in this portion, um, we would be placing, the intent is to place a map, a colored map on there as to where the location of the proposal is. Um, and that gives people a little bit of opportunity to orient. And then, you know, this is where the address would go. This is just me noting that this is an example. Um, so trying to be clear and concise with the information that we're conveying, get it in front of people, hopefully catch their eye with that colored map. Um, some proposed changes here, uh, for the neighborhood meetings. Uh, so the neighborhood meeting would be required for site plan review, conditional use permits, variances, concept plan for a new planned development district, amendment to a planned development district, preliminary plat, rezoning, text to an amendment, uh, or I'm sorry, a text amendment to a zoning ordinance, and that would be at a developer's request. Amendments to the current comprehensive plan, again, at the developer's request. Now, I think it's important to note that there are many situations where a development proposal incorporates a number of these things, right? So we're not gonna require them to hold a separate meeting for each individual thing. Um, the expectation would be that, um, you know, all of these items are being discussed. Um, and then if he's.
Cut out, you know, as we discuss this, we really have been doing it, but it's never been a requirement in the past.
Yep.
For most developments. I don't think too many have.
Yeah, it's a, it's a strong, right now, a strong encouragement by staff, um, for developers to do this. Um, I think most of them comply, um, and if, when they don't, ahead of concept, I think they hear loud and clear often from you all in the planning commission that they would like to see that happen. Often it becomes a condition of approval in that situation. Um, but right now it's not required by ordinance, right? And so it becomes more of a negotiated thing. Also, something that we've noticed because it's not required is there's a lot of variation how it happens. Um, sometimes it happens, you know, a week or less before the public meeting. You know, sometime, you know, there's different, different variations on how developers provide the notice for that to occur. Um, and so we're really providing some formality and some, you know, minimum thresholds here that developers are going to have to do. I also think it's nice that it's going to require it ahead of concept submission, um, when a concept plan is required, so that the developer can then reflect that in the notes, uh, provide those meeting minutes as part of their submission, which then that becomes public, so there's an accountability piece to that. So now neighborhoods or neighbors have an opportunity to read those minutes and say, yeah, it was accurate, or oh, by the way, the developer missed X, Y, Z, and correct that at the public meeting. And it also then provides opportunity for the developer to hear the feedback and respond to that in their submission. We heard X and we are responding to that by Y. Or, you know, I think it is reasonable to expect that there are any situations where a neighborhood wants something, um, but it may not be feasible. But at minimum, the developer then needs to talk about why that's the case, right? They need to justify their reaction to one or another.
I mean, it's, we go through that all the time. We can't always say yes, but we need to understand.
Understand why you can't.
Understand why we can't.
Right.
Yep.
But, so we got no more than six months, but going back to what you had said, some did it a week before. Is there a thing where it says they gotta be done? I mean, I know it says we gotta have them all submitted, but they could still, again, go back to that week?
So the meeting needs to happen and it needs to be part of their concept submission, their application submission. And so if they're going to do it, in the shortest they would be able to do, would be about, um, just over a month ahead.
Okay.
Of maybe going to the planning commission.
So, I mean, I, I think to that point, the one thing I kinda feel is missing is that, that we're, we're basically saying, go do the neighborhood meeting, but then it doesn't necessarily, it, it suggests, but doesn't necessarily explicitly say that you need to at least respond to each of the points or, you know, from that meeting in some material way as part of the submission, right? Because I think the expectation is that we're not just having you go through the motions to go through the motions, right? We want you to do this with the intent, you'll take that feedback and potentially look at how you'd address these, some of these items, if they're practical to address and incorporate that into the submission. So I think that there should be something that at least, that more strongly calls out that's the intent of why we were doing.
Wouldn't that be in our ordinance, so they'd have all this information?
Yeah, I'd have to pull the ordinance language out to get into that.
Right.
That level of detail, but I'm pretty sure in the ordinance, and Jake, I don't know if you remember, um, she helped us draft it, too. I'm pretty sure we put language in there that talks about the developer needs to provide a summary of the meeting, and then there's details about what that means.
Right, just that.
And then also talk about how the meeting influenced the, the application.
But I, but I think that, you know, that, to me, that's really gotta be clear that it's not just influence, but I mean, if we got, you know, if someone got feedback on something, it's one thing to say, well, yeah, influence it. You know, that's a pretty general term, right? But I think that, you know, I'd like to at least have them be able to, to sort of, you know,
Yeah, so it says.
Respond back a little more definitively.
It does say in the language, an explanation of the ways in which the submitted application demonstrates a response to the feedback provided during the neighborhood meetings.
And I like that because I do think it's.
But I guess if we can make it more, but, uh, I don't know.
Yeah, I was just saying, I like that wording because I do think the response might not be, yeah, we listened to him and we did that.
Right.
The response might be, yeah, we listened and here's why we can't do that or didn't do that. And that's okay, because, you know, when you ask for feedback, sometimes you get a lot of ideas that you can't actually implement. So I think, I like that wording because I think it is, it does leave open to, and then that's what our job and the planning commission does, is we agree or disagree with their decision not to implement that, or is that feasible, too? So I, I thank you for clarifying that, 'cause I do think that helps, you know, set that expectation and allows them to do their job. But also allows us the flexibility to comment if we think we're doing their, they're doing their job effectively, right?
Right. I think that language, language is fine. I mean, it's the, I think that's actually fine, 'cause I didn't, I didn't catch that when I was looking at it. The only other thing that I wanted to call out was that you mentioned, like, you know, during the hours of six to nine on Monday through Fridays, the only thing I'd add to that was not including holidays, right? Because obviously we're doing this intentionally to say during the, the weekdays, right?
Sure.
Because, you know, people are home or, you know, working or whatever. But then if someone says, you know, someone's trying to game the system and say, well, I'll just do it on like, mon, you know, like, I'll do it like on a Monday night of like a holiday of something when they expect no one's gonna be around. Oh, no one showed up, like, couldn't get any feedback, right? Like, let's say Christmas falls on a Monday or something, right? Yep. Didn't, Christmas Day, nobody showed up, hey?
Yeah.
Guess it wasn't that interesting.
We would find, we would see that right away.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I don't like him. Okay, so I respectfully actually don't like him.
Cause there's a lot of different holidays.
What's holiday scheduling following, right?
Well, maybe just like a federal holiday. I mean, just to, I mean.
You could, but again, I still, I do think it is the obvious choice. Like if, you know, like, oh, what was that date? That was Christmas Eve or.
Well, I mean.
Halloween night, uh, which actually might be a great time to do a house neighborhood meeting, provide candy and have a trick or treat spot. I, I just don't know if we have to be that prescriptive, I guess, is my thought.
I mean, some of them are gonna be obvious like that, but then if someone does it like on a holiday, you know, because remember, we're gonna be seeing this months, like, you know, potentially months later, depending upon when that goes through. It may not be obvious to us if we're just looking through the packet of like all this, because there's something.
It may not be to us, but they would, they would see that. They would certainly look at the date. Wouldn't you get, get, I mean, you would look at that. If they said, if they said, we held a neighborhood meeting, nobody showed up. I mean, we'd go, when did you hold it? And if they said, well, I held it on December twenty fourth.
Yeah, I think it's important to understand, there's, there's a lot of scenarios here that could happen. Um, I do think that, you know, if a developer wanted to hold it on a holiday, that, that's a pretty thinly veiled attempt, um, which we can call them out on. Um, I guess it's kind of, if, if council wants, you know, I think it'd be easy enough to add, um, you know, the exception for federal holidays. Um, I think it's a little, I, I get your point, Councilmember Gra. There are plenty of holidays, um, that are not federal holidays. Like Halloween would be one good example, um, or National Night Out would be another one. And so, you know, there's, there's always gonna be discretion, I guess, to be had. So I, I guess I, you know, if council wants to go that direction, we can certainly, you know, amend that. You, you could make that part of your motion tonight.
I just don't feel it's a, a big add and it's just kind of, because it's already enough things for staff to try to track in terms of detail, that when you look at these packets, I mean, there's literally hundreds of things staff is looking for. This is just one more thing, but like, it's like, just the obvious thing, just don't do that. You kind of, because then they'll kind of get where we're coming from, right? That's, to me, it's just, it's, it's super easy to put it in there now, right?
I don't know. The same thing goes for, you know, would they wanna be there on a, on a holiday? I mean, I, I don't know. If it's not a big deal, I, it's not anything that I see.
I'd say, yeah, I've known plenty of developers who would, who would like to game the system and that's a way to game the system. It just makes it easier, it's easier on staff to like not have to worry about that, 'cause it's like, it's just covered.
But if they pull that, it slows the process, 'cause it could be denied, 'cause they didn't have a public meeting. I mean, there's no input from the neighborhood.
But what, I guess what I'm saying is that by the fact that we have it in there, so you can't do it on a, on a federal holiday, then it's like, okay, well, they're just not gonna do it on a federal holiday. It just takes that onus off of staff to have to chase those down, or like, why didn't you do it?
But Halloween's not a fed, federal holiday.
Agreed, but I mean, it, it's, but they, you know, it's one of those things where it takes most, a good chunk of those off the map. And it's easy enough to add like a couple of words in there right now, then we're just done. I, I, if council wants to go that direction, I.
I have no stronger opinion than I.
But I, I do wanna ask, I wanna change gears to ask about the postcard. Um, is this like the final design for this piece?
The, well, so the postcard was more of an update. Um, it's not something that's being approved by the ordinance or anything. It was just, um, you know, wanting to give you that update. And so if you see things that you think could be, you know, changed or approved, my.
I do, I mean, I do have some suggestions.
It's gonna be a thing that's in continual, you know, refresh and re.
Yeah, I didn't know how detailed you want me to get, just 'cause, and looking at the postcard.
If you've got some ideas, maybe, you know, you could let me know now or just shoot.
No, I can, I can give you feedback. No, I can, I can give you feedback later. I don't, I don't wanna take up any time. It's just, I don't, I, I guess, I guess my one question here is, are we, is the plan to send these like bulk mail? Or is, are we like stamping every, I mean, I suppose in the scenario, cause like usually the threshold's like, what, 200, 250 mail pieces for bulk mail? Like.
And we're not sending it, developers sending it, right?
No, I think we're sending the postcard.
Depends on the situation.
Because it's like the public meeting notice. Cause, and it would be for like the planning commission meeting, right? Not the council meeting.
Well, stop in planning commission, yeah.
Cause that would come first. Yeah, I just was, anyways.
It's not bulk, is it?
I mean, you get a better rate with, I mean, bulk mail, you're like, okay, it's, yeah, so you get a better rate with bulk mail. But you have to hit so many pieces in order to like hit that threshold for bulk mail. But there are certain rules and limitations when you put together a mail piece because of the way it reads through a machine. And I just, I see red flags with the postcard and the way it's currently being designed. But just in the overall scheme of things, which I don't have to go into too much detail. I just think, um, it could be laid out maybe a little bit different to still be informative. But yeah, a little more eye catching, because if I were to get that in the mail, it's a lot of text and people don't read anymore. Like they used to, you know? And so I think it needs, I don't know, it could be reformatted just a little bit differently.
It, when, when we're saying a postcard, we're saying that si, that size that we had.
The six by 12?
The building stuff.
Or six by 11?
I, I don't know what that, that.
It's a six by 11, yeah.
That's what you're talking, right? You could get caught, hung up on a postcard being the little.
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't, I mean.
I think I took a eight and a half by 11 and I cut it in half.
It was a five and a half by eight and a half piece. And cause that's what it looks like it's formatted to be. But I, I just look at it like, the only reason why I bring it up is because I think it's really great that we're doing this and I think it needs to be done. But I think it also needs to be done in a manner that is conducive for people to actually pay attention to it. Yeah, you have to look at a postcard to throw away, but if there's a lot of writing on it, you're really maybe not gonna look too hard. And then you're gonna say, you never got it. You're gonna, they're gonna have people swearing up and down, they never got it, because they didn't actually look at it. And you want people to actually look at it for at least three seconds before they throw it in the garbage if they decide they don't wanna be bothered with it. The way that this is laid out, it's, it's informative, but it's not eye catching. So it just needs to be maybe retooled a little bit to like, make it more eye catching, yet still informative, so. And suffice for mailing, you don't, cause the way, yeah, the way it is, it could all, they could all be sent back to us with numbers and things at the bottom, so that's all.
Hundred percent agree with that comment. It's, you know, cause it's one of those things, I think a lot of people look at, oh, there's probably some, like, someone trying to sell me something or whatever, and it's gone. And they don't even really read, they look at it, but they don't read it. Because it's like, it looks like, because there's a, there's plenty of spam stuff that just comes through that just, that's too much information, whatever. It's probably not that important, right? One, one question actually I did have was that, um, on this, you said the ways to view before this. Was there an intent for having the call the planning department first versus go to city hall? Cause I mean, just more of curiosity.
I'm sorry, where?
So on the, on the card template, um, it says, you know, ways to view the plans before the meeting. And it says the first thing is to call the planning department. Versus view it like online, call the planning department, then city hall.
We can switch the order.
Well, yeah, I was just wondering if there's a reason why you said to call, have you, have them call you first.
I, yeah, I don't think there was a reason. I think we were just trying to get all the options out.
Yeah, I mean, just my recommendation would be to have the, view it on the website first, then, you know, call the planning department, then city hall's just, you know. Otherwise, if the first option is to call you, oh, yeah, then you're gonna second, you might get a more of a volume of calls. That's just a suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah, I do like the idea that we can continue to update this. Cause I think when you look at the phase two things, uh, with the website that gets implemented, I do think QR codes. Like there's a good article about like the fact that predict, QR codes were predicted to die and go away and now they're like resurged and they're really useful. And it's because like, I don't want, give me a website, I'm not gonna wanna go and sit down and type website in. I just wanna pull up my phone and scan. So I think when we get those websites up and some of that QR codes on here are great, because then you're like, oh, I can do it right there. Cause if they don't do, generally speaking, if I get that in the mail and I don't do something with it in that moment and I set it down, it may not ever get picked back.
Yeah, it'll get buried, yeah.
Right, so give them everything they can instantly access that's available, right? And, you know, drive action to go do something, but I do like it.
So I think there's like that question is that, you know, you're trying to strike that balance between what's the legal requirement for a notice? Because you have to be, you know, it has to be a certain amount of information on there. Versus the fact that we're trying not to overwhelm people with information so they kind of just check out and say, that's probably not that important because it looks.
Or it's not legit.
Or it's not legit, right? Cause it looks scammy, right?
Yep.
And so, you know, I know that, so totally in favor of trying to like work through the design of this. But I think that, you know, one of the things that we definitely want to be cognizant of, while, when we move towards QR codes is too, is that there's still a significant population that's still not necessarily tech savvy or cell phone savvy or doesn't use cell phones. You know, I mean, especially older adults who don't, for whatever reason, aren't good at it. And we don't wanna necessarily alienate them because they say, oh, there's this thing with QR, cause I don't even know what it is. And, you know, just throw it away, right? And think it's not important. Like my mom would be one of those people who would just do something like that. So, um, you know, I think that's, we just need to, just something to keep in mind as we're looking at that design to make sure that we're inclusive of, you know, different ages that may not be tech savvy too, as much as we do wanna include those who are.
Okay, I think we covered this one.
Otherwise, in principle, I love the idea of going towards a format that they have to look at. I mean, I love the concept of it, yeah. Still, definitely some work to be done, but I mean, I love the direction.
Okay, good, thanks for the feedback. Okay, so a little bit more on neighborhood meetings, post-meeting requirements. We would be requiring a summary of the neighborhood meeting for applications submitted to the zoning administrator. So that would be Liz and I. The summary would be to include materials presented, comments and questions by attendees, responses given, and how the application is responding to neighborhood feedback. This would be necessary for a complete application. So if this, if these don't, things don't happen, they don't happen sufficiently, staff does have grounds per the ordinance to say that the application is incomplete. And therefore they're not able to be brought, you know, to planning commission and council. I do think it's important to note, you know, we're thinking about, I think a lot of, you know, the media example that comes to your head is, I don't know, something like maybe one of the apartment complexes that went through the, you know, Clover Ridge neighborhood this year. Where you do have a lot of people who are wanting to get engaged in that kind of thing. I also think it's very possible and likely that we will have projects that are occurring in a location where maybe there aren't a lot of neighbors. Or maybe it's an expansion in the North Industrial Park or something like that. Where, you know, the folks surrounding it don't feel like it's that big of an impact. And you don't really get a big attendance, if anybody at all. Or maybe the meeting is held and it's folks who are friendly to the project and you talk more about, I don't know, where you play golf or something like that, right? So I think just be prepared that you're gonna see the spectrum of, of all of that in those meetings. So we were also going to be, through this ordinance change, requiring that signs be posted on the sites of, of development proposals. This would be required for all applications that require a neighborhood meeting. Will be displayed along public streets that abut the property. And the ordinance has more specific language about at every 500 feet. So if you have a really large, you know, development proposal, there might be multiple signs on a single street furniture. Will be installed prior to planning commission review and remain until final decision or application is withdrawn. The city's gonna have discretion on that. You know, we could decide to do it longer if we're thinking that there's a reason for that. Developer will be charged a fee to offset the signage cost, installation or removal. Now, it'll be the city, on city staff to design the signs, order the signs, working with Public Works to place the signs. So it's not the developer's job to do that, it'll be city's job to do that. The reason for that is we wanna make sure that we have consistency with the design of the sign. We also wanna make sure the signs are put in a visible location and that we can feel comfortable with how that's happening.
I'm just imagining like a tiny little corrugated sign.
That could be a result, right? Yeah, that's what we wanna avoid.
So how, how, what is like roughly gonna be the size of this?
Yep, so this sign would be four foot by four foot. And that's in working with Ken Forner at Promotion Graphics, who does a lot, we do a lot of work with him on signs. That was his recommendation for size. It's also consistent with what Chan Hassen does. And you'll probably note the design is not all that different because Nate's not a graphic designer.
It's good colors.
I think it looks very nice. Eye catching with the, you got good branding on there and.
It's got better colors and a better logo than Chan Hassen.
Yeah.
And if they try and say we copied them, just don't listen.
That's okay, I'm fine with that.
That's good.
It works.
No, I mean, it's crisp, I mean, the key thing here is crisp, it catches your eye and it's easy to read, right?
Yep.
It accomplishes all three of those.
Yep.
So, I mean.
One potential add in the future, right now, we have it going to the General Chaska website. We may look at the opportunity to add a QR code to it. And I recognize that's probably not a useful thing for someone who's driving by. But for someone who may be walking by or maybe drives by and decides to, you know, stop and grab that QR code, it's an opportunity there. We don't wanna put it right now, um, because we're still in the process of developing that landing page. So I wanna make sure that we have a place that that QR code is going to, and that's fully developed before we do that.
I think the key thing about this isn't actually the sign, because I think the sign's fine. I mean, there's, it's sharp, it's easy, it's very simple and it's easy to remember, right? The key thing is that if someone goes to chaskamn.gov, are they gonna be easy, easily able to find that development? Because, you know, if I go there now and say, I'm looking for developments, like, oh my gosh, there's just, you know, all these menus. And some of the menus drop down, there's like, you know, seven to 12 things and it's just, you know, where do you even start, right? So I think that, you know, where the navigation is on the main landing page for the homepage for chaskamn.gov, there needs to be something, proposed developments as something big and easy to spot. So that way they go there and there's the list, map, whatever, however we do it. But it just needs to be easy to get to off that homepage.
And that's, and that's something that's in development too, is that landing spot for development proposals that we're, we're working on. So we're not quite there yet. But I think, you know, as time progresses here, and we're not far away, that navigation will become much easier. And then that gives us an opportunity to take a look at, well, maybe, do we get a little more specific with the link that, or with the, blinking on the word, the, the address, I guess, the web address, right? That we're providing on the sign. These are signs that we hope to be able to reuse. I think some of them will be out there long enough that weather will take care of them or whatever. But, but they're, for now, I've only ordered three. It's just so we have some on hand for when we get that, you know, next proposal and we can get them out there. But there's plenty of opportunity to revise that design to incorporate those things.
And assume that, you know, the, you know, the, the website and things will evolve and, you know, as we get feedback.
Yep. So that's, that's really everything that the ordinance would be doing tonight. But I do wanna give you an update on some of that phase two stuff that we've been working on.
Just before you move on to phase two, I, I think, I do wanna make the comment because I don't wanna get lost of someone just tuning in to this conversation about the work. You, you referenced the work session. And if I say anything wrong, correct me, right? But I just, I think it's important people understand too that this is, we benchmark other cities, this is consistent. Where we feel it's a good balance of protecting and informing residents. It's also not creating a hindrance that is unexpected from a developer that would, you know, maybe they would say, I'm not gonna go to Chaska, look at all these rules, right? It's like, we're being consistent, I just want people to know that and, and get that on the record out there. Cause it was a work session, we looked at all those examples. Cause, you know, if you're just tuning in, you could think, great, but like now are we gonna be difficult to work with as a developer? And the answer is no, this is pretty common across lots of cities. I just wanna make sure people are aware of that. We're not creating huge hindrances that developers aren't gonna wanna work with Chaska.
Right, yep.
We're really just meeting the standards that have already existed in a lot of cities.
It's a refresh.
Yep, this is kind of a lot of, there's a lot of best practice that exists that we're incorporating into this. We're not really inventing a lot of new things here.
I would just say it's a very valid point that you brought forward. And staff called a lot of cities, so this is nothing. We're not doing anything that's out of the ordinary, does every city do this? No, we never used to do it either, you know? But it's a way for us to better inform our residents. And that's really the key of what, what, what we even started with. Cause we didn't feel that our residents were finding, understanding what's happening or reading the notices. So this is just another tool in the toolbox to make sure that, you know, we're trying to do everything we possibly can when something's going on, so.
Yep, and the ordinance language itself is not exact, but it is patterned after other communities that are doing similar things. So we looked specifically or in particular, pretty heavily to Shakopee, who just recently, a year or two ago, made some similar changes and similar requirements. And so they've been through, you know, some use on it. I was able to kind of pick the brain a little bit of their community development director, who shared with me that it's worked pretty well for them. So we were able to take what they've done and kind of incorporate some of the things that we maybe wanted to seal, you know, some of the specifics a little bit differently from them. But we're not, we're not making things up.
That's why I make sure that was on the record.
Yep.
Yep.
So the phase two items, these are the items that are in process and we will be, you know, working on rolling out, hopefully before the year's done. The first one would be that development proposal webpage on the city website. Staff are actively working to develop a page format that will include key project details. So we're looking at providing details like the applicant, the stage of the review process that it's in, access to key documents that relate to the project and the application, summary of approvals received, you know, and other critical information like that. So, you know, one, one thing that we're thinking about is being able to graphically display where it's at in the process. We've got our three step process. Kind of think of it like, this is how I've been thinking about it. You know, you see those thermometers for fundraising things, right? It could be something along those lines, right?
We should have like a little person running towards like.
Towards the finish line or something?
Yeah.
We could have our logo.
We'll do that and it can kind of bounce along like a.
The tree getting colored in. Yeah, the tree gets colored in.
All right.
Okay, oh.
Good enough for us.
Sure.
I'm full of ideas.
Yeah.
They're full of thoughts.
But, so the idea is that we'll have, you know, a landing page, but then also project specific pages also. So for any specific project, you'd be able to go to that dedicated page and learn what you want to learn about the project. Also along with that is a GIS map application. So this is a screenshot of very preliminary, you know, kind of where we're at in that development. But the, the general idea is that we would be placing a dot in locations where there's a project proposal. These are made up dots, they're not necessarily proposals that are going on right now. So that someone can quickly see what's going on, understand, you know, where they live and kind of get what's, you know, what's going on approximate to them. Then be able to have the opportunity to click on the dot and have a pop-up happen where you're gonna get some of that basic information about it. So, you know, basic general description of the proposal, who's, who's proposing it, maybe where it's at in the stage. But then also a link to that specific development page on the website. So you can go there and get that, you know, more detailed information if you're wanting to get that. We're also looking at opportunities, and there's a lot of things you can do with these applications. But having a navigation bar on the side where we would have sort of a project, a visual of the project. So maybe like as elevations become available, we would put that in there. Maybe as you're starting out, we don't quite have that yet, it might just be the site map or something like that. But it kind of gives you that visual. We're also thinking about, and we'll see how this goes, but are there opportunities to help visually signify where the project is at in the process through maybe color? So maybe there's like a green, yellow, red, or I don't know. Those are things that we're think, that we're playing around with and trying to figure out, so. It will be mobile friendly, so it will work whether using your phone or iPad or, you know, desktop computer. It will format to fit those devices. We do intend to share this with the planning commission and you all before launch. So we wanna give you the opportunity for a preview, build a way in, you know, play around with it. Give us your thoughts on maybe where you're seeing difficulties or whatever. And then we can incorporate that feedback before we go fully live with it. We're also looking at, and we haven't dove too hard into this quite yet, but developing a best practices manual or guide for developer neighborhood meetings. So I think the idea behind this is that we're gonna be requiring developers to do this. I think we can set them up for success by giving them some, some basic information around how to effectively do that. Now there are developers who are well adept at this and I think they'll go above and beyond and probably don't need that. Now, there are developers who are well adept at this, and I think they'll go above and beyond and probably don't need that, that extra resource. But I think there are also others who are smaller and maybe haven't done much of this, who could benefit from that resource. So trying to meet the needs of, of the full scope of developer community that we work with. So with that, unless there's any questions, the recommended action tonight would be a motion to adopt ordinance number 1021, approving the zoning ordinance amendment to chapter 15.08.
Comments? Questions?
Well overdue. I mean, I remember as a resident when I was here, gosh, this was probably like 14, 15 years ago, you know, when 212 project was going, or the 212 medical center was going in. One of the complaints my neighbors had is, was exactly this, that they felt like they weren't getting notified because of just the nature of where it was. There were only those of us who kind of abutted the development or were nearest to it, you know, were getting notified. But a lot of other neighbors were really concerned, like, how come we didn't hear about it? How come we had to hear about it for somebody else? And it's been, it's been on top of my mind for a long, long time. And, you know, I think it's, it's past due, but I'm glad we're doing it. I'm really glad we're putting a signage out. I know that, you know, the mayor's made comments in the past about, you know, having signage and doing that in 100% agreement with that. And, you know, it's, be able to, you know, it extends that transparency. Something's happening here. This is what's going on. This is, you know, what we know about it and can share. Those are all things that go towards, you know, building trust with the community and go towards constructive dialogue, you know, sooner in the process when, you know, meaningful change is much easier to accomplish. So, you know, I'm fully supportive of this, and, you know, this is, it goes a long way towards helping us all come to better solutions more quickly with less friction.
A couple, let's take effect then tonight if this is passed. And then does that require anything that hasn't started? Does that require then signage? I mean, I'm not against that, but is it, if, if they're already at, say, say the site by cousins, then does the sign go there once we approve this?
Yeah.
I mean, if you haven't thought about it, that's fine, but.
Yeah. No, well, we have. So it will go into effect, there's a posting period that needs to occur. I think, is it 30 days, Jake, after ordinance is approved? We need to publish it in the newspaper.
That sounds about right, but I wouldn't take that to the bank for me, but.
Let me follow up with you, Nate. I mean, there is, there isn't a, you know, a period of days. I don't know if it's 30. I'll confirm that.
Okay. So there, there's a period, right?
Right.
And we'll have to publish it in the newspaper and then go through that process. But once that's done, then it's in effect. The way that the ordinance is written is that the signs, what triggers the sign is the concept plan application effectively. And so for things that are already in process, it wouldn't be, our ordinance wouldn't require a sign to go in. Now that said, I think it would be good practice. I think it's going to depend a little bit on where, where it's in the process. For example, you know, to use the example that you used, Mayor, that one is teed up for final approval in consideration in October. I don't think it's going to make sense to put a sign out there at this point for that one. Now, there are others. Like, there was a concept plan earlier this year proposed for the Friends Worm Property in southwest Chaska. That one, you know, there's, there's still probably a few months out from even submitting for preliminary because it's just have, it's a big project. There's a lot of work that you do. To me, it makes sense that signs go out on that site just because of the length of that process. So it's going to kind of be, I think, a case-by-case that we need to take a look at where is it going to make sense to put signs out? We're at a stage right now where a lot of the projects that have been going through over the course of the summer are at final. And a lot of them are going to come through over the next couple of months. To me, it doesn't make sense that we're putting signs out for those situations.
That's fine. I was just, like I said, I'll just comment. Lastly, I, I'd just like to say thanks to the staff because this is exactly, to me, what we asked for when we had the joint session. It's something I think we as a council have been talking about for quite some time, about just notices and how we notify. Will this go away completely about somebody saying they didn't see it? No. But it's another pretty obvious way that helps that. And increasing the distance, you know, just leaves those that are a little further away. Because sometimes we've had, we've had stuff happen and nobody fit the circle, you know? So now at 500 feet, now it's, once you're probably past that, it really shouldn't have a great effect on, on you personally, I wouldn't think. But I'm just, so I, I just want to say thank you for putting this together. And like Commissioner, or Councilmember Wong said, that, you know, long overdue and glad we're doing it. I think, I think that signage at the site will really make a difference as we move forward. It just will make, you know, hopefully people then at least see it, and either they look into it or at least they know what's happening. You know? So thank you for, for putting this together. I, I think it really followed from what I recall of our, our meeting. I think you're, you're hitting on all the things that were of concern, so. Thanks. All right, anyone else? If not, we have a zoning ordinance amendment on the table.
So I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1021, approving the zoning ordinance amendment to chapter 1508. And can I make the addendum for not holiday, not federal holidays?
If you'd like.
Sure. With that addendum, for the, what we discussed earlier.
So it's just federal holidays?
Federal and state holidays, then we're kind of covered there. And I think it's reasonable.
All right. So we have a motion for adopting ordinance 1021 from Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Hubbard. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, that's the end of our action items, and now we move into bills. Bills, anyone have a question?
I have one question. So on page nine, there's an item from Minnesota Valley Electric MVEC. And I was wondering, normally we don't usually see bills from MVEC. Is this just a pass-through? Or what was the story behind this particular one? Because normally we're dealing with MMPA.
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Sounds good.
Well, there, there are some areas within our city.
Yep.
That they have, and I, there might be some. But yeah, you'd have to.
Just, yeah.
Because I thought we've had some Minnesota Valley Electric bills in the past.
It's pretty rare, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, and it's like I say, it could be. Yeah, who knows?
Yeah, exactly. And I know I've seen it before in the past, but it's kind of unusual that it pops up. That's why I was kind of wondering about it. So, but otherwise, that's my only question.
All right, anyone else? Motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard. Discussion. Elise, who can roll?
Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Yes.
Mayor Winchell?
Aye. Moves us to other business. Councilmember Hubbard tonight.
I really don't have much. I, I did attend the Latin and Music Festival down at Fireman's Park on Friday. It, I, I thought it was very well done. There was a lot of different food vendors there, and the music was phenomenal, the entertainment, the crowds. I was a little concerned with us moving it to the fall, although it coincides nicely with the Spanish Heritage Month. And I was worried about it being on a Friday with like football games and, you know, certain schools in the area, you know, not Chaska, but, you know, other schools having their homecoming and things like that. But it was really well attended, and it was, the fireworks were fantastic, so just really nice. And I just think it's just so great that we have so many different events that just celebrate.
Excuse me.
That celebrate, you know, just the community, everybody in it. I just really appreciate that. So just to, to the event organizers who did the hard work of planning it, they did a great job. To the sponsors, thank you for sponsoring, and to the food trucks and the food vendors that were there, they did, it was fabulous, so thank you. And just as, just another side note, I drove, I was on my way to work, and I saw the water tower in the Clover Ridge neighborhood. And it, it's not, it doesn't have a logo on it yet, but it's looking pretty shiny and bright, so I noticed that, and I thought that was great. Otherwise, that's pretty much it for me.
Okay. That's what we're happy with.
Yeah, besides what Councilmember Hubbard already mentioned, I would say just events coming up. Rooftop movie night on Saturday, the movie Coco at the Southwest Transit Station in Chaska. That's a fun one. And then the police department has a car seat clinic on the 27th at 3 o'clock. Well, the fire department slash police department. I think they're doing it together. Public safety. With the car seat clinic, and it'll be at the fire department. So it's Carver County Public Health and the Police Department at the Fire Department. But basically, car seat clinic, which coincides nicely with Target's car seat takeback, which is completely unrelated to the city, but still. And yeah, I think that's all. Yep.
Let's see, so, as Councilmember Hubbard mentioned, the Latin Music and Food Festivals was a wonderful event. Like, loved the turnout, the vendors, the, you know, thank you to, you know, all the organizers for it. The music was fantastic. I would have got out and learned dance myself, except for fact I have two left feet, so, you know, I didn't want to show off how bad I dance.
There are some good dancers.
There's some really good dancers out there, so just fantastic to see, to see such a, to see such a diverse turnout. And it was just, it was really incredible, and just so really, really wonderful to see, you know, all those people out in the park and all the great food out there and music, so fantastic. Also mentioned the Oktoberfest at Tran Brewery, also at the same time as Coco, except it goes from noon to 10 for those who are into craft beer, music, and activities there. Also, from the, from the bi-weekly notes, there was a mention of the Metronet and Jaguar, you know, starting to roll on internet, you know, here in Chaska. And I, I wanted to call that out just because I know they had a number of conversations with residents over the past few years about how, you know, they felt that Comcast was a monopoly in the city, and why doesn't the city do something about it? And people kind of accused the, the city of like, holding a monopoly, and why do you let them get away with it? And it's, the city's never had, say, any exclusive agreement to say, "You're the only provider." It's more that, you know, this provider is the only one who's willing to do, to make that investment to do that. So I'm really, really excited to see that happen, so that way we have some competition, which I think is good for consumers, is good for the marketplace, and hopefully drive down some of the internet cost. Because internet is, you know, we've kind of taken it for granted, but it's one of those things that, for a lot of people, it's, it's, it's a, it's a vital thing for, whether it's for work or school or for, you know, finding information. It's, it's a really critical lifeline for a lot of people these days. And so to make, to have that, to have competition just hopefully increases the availability and lowers the cost is a, is really important to our community. So I'm really glad that they're coming in to, you know, to, to offer a little more competition here. Southwest Transit update. So last time I mentioned we had the state fair, which we completed, and I talked a little bit about our numbers. But tonight, I actually have a little bit more in terms of numbers, in terms of financially how we did with that. I want to share that with you guys. So normally, just to preface it, normally the state fair operation, we run in a little bit of a loss, and it's by design because we're a public transit agency. So the goal is to try to break even as close as we can to break even. So in a normal, non-pandemic year, we usually come around like, you know, 20 grand in the hole for, you know, whatever that is. So it's not atypical. Like, 2019, I think we were down about 20 grand from the overall cost of 120,000 people that we moved. So that means the subsidies, like, you know, we're talking like 20 cents a passenger or something like that, so not.
You don't want just for state fair?
For just for state fair, just for state fair.
Let me make sure I'm clear on that.
This year, this year, it was, well, let's, let's, we went to last year. Last year, because we were running 12 days of state fair, there was hardly any people going to state fair because of the restrictions. We ended up, they ended up losing about 275,000 last year in state fair. So that's one of the reasons why we pared back our state fair service to eight days, basically the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So that way, the, the fares we got actually delivered riders to the fair, and we're getting fair revenue from it. Keeping in mind that we don't control fare, the, the fares we can charge, we can have, the max fare we can charge is $6 because that's what's mandated to us by Met Council. So using that, we were, this year, we're, we only lost 105,000 because we, you know, had a much, much better turnout, and we also had a lot more people attending. The big thing that impacted us this year was gas prices were almost double what they were last year. And so from just a rough numbers perspective, you know, basically it ended up that, you know, you know, basically that gas prices, had we, you know, run the same amount of people as in 2019, we would have, we would have been, you know, it would have been a significant, you know, loss in 2019 based on the current, based on the gas prices that we're, you know, impacted with now. But that said, in the big scheme of things, we're, you know, clawing back, the, the ridership was up to about 77% of what it was in pre-pandemic levels for the same time period. So that's really good. And the per-passenger subsidy was about $1.50 a person, so about 52. By comparison, if we do a normal express service, it's about $3 to $4 a passenger just to get someone downtown. So in the big scheme of things, we run the, the state fair service really efficiently, and we get a really good value per passenger, so happy to do that. And most importantly for us, state fair is probably one of the biggest marketing as well as community building events. Yep, because it actually gives us a lot of exposure. People experience it, and almost every year, after state fair, ridership spikes because people realize, wow, this is a great service. Why am I not taking this to work? So, you know, people start riding again and get back on the bus and really, you know, it always gives us a boost in ridership. So for us, it was really important to get back out there, to have that event, and to get people back in seats again. So this was, this year, I think, was very successful, and we're certainly looking forward to having a more successful year next year as we continue building back state fair service. So just wanted to share that with everyone and, you know, just express, you know, certainly a gratitude to like all the folks at, you know, Southwest Transit who, you know, you know, who like put in their all every day, and especially in the state fair period, because it's an exciting period. Any questions for me on that one? But that is all I have. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Graff?
I just had the comment on the water tower, and that's what you've been saying, so I'll just say leave it at that. No, you took my water. No, because I, I see it every Saturday, I see it every Saturday because I have like football there with my kids, and so I've kind of, I weekly get an update.
No, me and my son talk about it quite frequently when, when the cloth was up, so.
I witnessed, I witnessed some taking the, Saturday morning, taking the curtain rods down, and they're like leaning up over the thing on the thing around. You're just like, no, thank you. I mean, it was, it was, ever, all the kids like on the flag football, all of a sudden, we're all looking up, and we're like, what are you looking at? You look up, and there's these people just, because you can't see the screen that was up. So it literally just looks like they're floating above the water tower, like, no, thank you. But, yeah, it looks very nice. It's been kind of fun to watch, and I'm excited to see our image and font on there that we look so much at of what the font looks like and that image, so that's all I got.
Do we know when the complete date is? I mean, it's got to be soon.
Yeah, I think it, within another month or so.
Putting the names on now, taking everything off.
I just wonder if they're going to put like a big stencil and just like spray it.
Yeah, that's how they do it. Jake, anything?
They're printing it right now.
Elise?
I would just add a couple other, Councilmember Wong mentioned Shran's Oktoberfest. Also on Saturday, Garden Angels Desert Fall Festival. And the Chaska Downtown Business Alliance is holding a, in coordination with the libraries, holding a fall festival as well out here on the plaza. So lots of things to do downtown.
I wanted to make sure Elise had something to say, so I skipped that one from my list.
What, what time is that from?
Noon to 2:00. The one out here is from noon to 2:00. Noon to two. The one out here is from noon to two.
You've been dying to talk this whole time.
All right. Just a couple things. Driven by across town, you might notice the Lions Park Shelter is no longer. So we're in a major overhaul of, well, yes, it's torn down and rebuilding. I think construction will be starting very soon. I know the city did, it's kind of a partnership that we do some of the, the things that we can do. So they're getting it ready for pouring concrete and then they'll start the structure. And from what I got given to me, it sounds like probably ninety to ninety-five percent of it should be done prior to winter. So if you're wondering what happened to the shelter, I know I saw a couple of comments. The Lions Park Shelter is gone, so. So that's what's going on. We're partnering with the Lions. They put a lot of money up front as well, so that's, that's a good thing to see. And actually Kevin and I are going to speak to the Lions tomorrow night about our building proposal and to give them a little update on that park shelter. So that will be happening tomorrow night from six to seven roughly. The only other thing that, that I really want to mention tonight is John Lemson, prior owner of Lemson Chevrolet, passed away over the weekend. John was, was, he really exemplified community. I mean, there wasn't anything that he wasn't at, something he didn't donate for almost any and every event that was held around here, but not only here, neighboring communities as well. So kind of a, kind of a sad day when I, when I heard it. He just was a, you know, John was that big man with a big smile and liked to have fun and was, was at everything. And so I just want to offer condolences to the Lemson family. And I, I know they've already got arrangements all done. There'll be a review Friday night at Burtus. And this, the funeral service is eleven o'clock on Saturday at St. John's. So coincides with all the events happening on Saturday. But, so I, I just want to mention that and I again offer condolences to the Lemson family. And John certainly has been a big, big part of this community all the while he's been here, so. All right, I don't think I really, no, that's it. With that, last call, although I entertain a motion to adjourn. Well, we're back to normal schedule. We meet now on, just got a calendar, third?
October third.
October third. What time?
October, October?
Third.
Third and seventeenth, so we're back to normal scheduling for meetings, so.
No plan on Halloween?
Right now, nothing. I'll say, I won't say it's not anything because you never know. Something could come up, so, but right now, no.
It's not a federal holiday.
It's not a federal holiday. We can still meet. All right, if there, if no one else has got last call, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Post same sign. Good night, thanks. Vikings are getting smoked.
Oh, no.